This conference will now be recorded.
Member guest on February 21st and the MGA Election Day member member on February 28th and 29th. I'm going to now eliminate public comments on anything other than those items that are on the action agenda. We require you to hold your comments to three minutes. And with that, is there anyone that has a public comment that they would like to address? Please come up to the podium and is it on?
I got it from this side.
Got it.
And we ask you to state your name and your residence.
Hi, my name is Jessica Nunez.
Please speak into the microphone, please.
My name is Jessica Nunez. And I'm a resident of Sunland Lake. My address is 3824 Santiago Street. This is my neighbor, Rachel, and her address is 3818 Santiago Street. And my husband, Aubrey. Okay, so our issue is composed of two things that we have going on. We have a sanitary manhole in the back. And I apologize, we're very nervous, I didn't know there was going to be many people here. We have a sanitary manhole that's in the back. I brought a copy of our survey showing that. This sanitary manhole has been brought to the attention of the association for the past two years along with drainage issues that we have in the front. We live on Santiago. You guys should be well aware that that road had heavy, heavy water during the hurricanes. A lot of thrusters in that area had to be replaced.
Just relax.
And so now we have an issue between the sanitary manhole and the drainage in the front. We are the last two homes on Santiago Street. Past their home, it's just what's our vacant lots. Those vacant lots do not have the culverts in between. Heavy rains come in, we are forced to absorb all of this water. And our street is landing downward and it sits in between his and my house. In between our homes, we have the sanitary manhole drainage issue, right? The water from our front drainage has forced in between through the easement all the way pretty much meeting up with the back sanitary manhole. So I have plenty of photos showing what the sanitary manhole looks like. Easement in between what we have done to preserve our properties. We put rock, we have good, easily rock. We cannot continue to afford to try remedies this on our own. When we have presented it to board, we were advised that we sit on, or when we took it to the association, they told us that we sit on wetlands. I also brought-
Excuse me, this point of association are you talking about? The district office?
Our district office, yes.
Okay.
We have been going back and forth with this. It's been over two and a half years since the hurricane. Another issue that impacted this, the lot next to my home was a vacant lot for many years. Never been built, my house is from the seventies. That lot in between is the only lot vacant on the streets of Pinnin. Four probably in the region. That lot being vacant used to absorb a lot of the water. Now there's a new construction, the guy built it up, so now everyone just collects on our end. So we're not asking the district to really do much. It's repair, the cracked sanitary manhole. We have kids, they have kids. There's probably wastewater out there. I understand that they have addressed that and they are going to work on it, but we would like a completion date for something as well as a front. We've seen the flags, you're going to do something there with the swales. But they don't want to take any responsibility into easement in between, which is affecting our structures of our homes. I have cracks, she has cracks, they got to repair. Bathrooms, there's mold. My house has cracks in my bedroom, I can see daylight. I'm not asking and she's not asking for repairs internally, but we have to remedy in between our properties. There's plenty of voters to support. It isn't a reported easement, which we were also told it's not a maintained easement, which probably should have been maintained if we would have been in this situation right now.
You said 24th on the other, right?
Yep, 38.
Okay. Okay, we will, we'll give the other. Would you please get into the general manager.
It's right here.
You have it in your packet.
Mm-hmm, it's in your packet.
Amplify that specifically, this is what we are working at. Do you have any questions on you?
Okay. All right, any more public comments? Moving along, like a motion to prove the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Call the vote.
Supervisor Brooks.
It's wrong, just so you know, there's bad numbers in there. I understand. No.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
Supervisor Norton.
Yes.
President Herrick.
Yes. Message from Scott Kerouac.
He called us, he wants to raise emergency, he couldn't make it.
Okay.
But if you want to update the group on what we discussed, he said he's fine.
Well, why don't you, you go ahead.
So on behalf of Mr. Kerouac, we had a meeting with the county commissioner last week, specifically for the landowners meeting, talking about some concerns we had. We brought up a concern that what we submitted to the county was taking too long to process. The feedback on this morning, he talked to the county, he talked directly to the county attorney, that it will be on February's agenda, so the first of the week, it will be on the agenda, I will be at that meeting for that event. And that will be discussing the code enforcement changes as well as changing from a proxy to an absentee ballot. So that will be on county vote for February. The other discussions about the potential of putting an overlay across Sunland Lake for zoning is going to be worked through their staff. So very similar to what they do in Sebring, Avon Park, and Lake Placid. If there's a zoning specific issue with the aesthetics of a house, have a garage, no garage, Sunland Lake, we will have a vote in that moving forward. Right now, we don't. The county approves them, the county issues permits. So he's entertaining that idea that working with their zoning folks, we will have this overlay so every time that happens. There's some entity from Sunland Lake, it could be the GM, it could be another commission we set up, we'll review all those for our input back to the county to say we agree or disagree. That weighs a lot to the county folks because we have an interested party saying yes or no. So that was very positive. And there was a few other issues with Sushi Market Road, Sunland Lake Boulevard, general repairs, the preserve sidewalk continuing from Sunland Lake all the way out to the preserve sidewalk off Park Trail. So very productive meeting, and I think on his behalf, he'll push it to his level. At his level, he made it very clear, three supervisors are up for election this year. So it's a good year to rattle the gates a little bit and to see what they can do for us, not only him as our rep, but you have two other commissioners that are up. And it takes three, just like here, it takes three to get things done. So the potential for that is high this year. Good meeting.
And we also, one other item that we did discuss is try to get a recycling center here closer to the residents, but in a place where if we have access, probably like off the frontage road, so that we don't have to look at it just to make. But they're saying that they may, they have one in Sebring, Lake Placid, and Avon Park. And they're manned, and they're telling, they're telling us that they have not had issues with garbage being placed around the outside of the fence, because it's a fenced-in area. It's, you can only go there certain hours. So we're looking at that. It probably, we'll be having more discussions about it as we move along here. Okay, any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is William Masline. I live at 4510 Cal Trava. And my question is, I know we had a discussion, the board had a discussion about having a fully elected board, and I know you had to, you know, go to the county and get approval, et cetera. I did notice that we are going to be appointing somebody today, landowner seat, and that appointment is going to be for four years.
Correct.
Now, if we go to a totally elected board, does that person still sit there for four years?
Yeah, well, first off, as of right now, we are not going to buy public or popular vote seats. It was going to stay as two landowner seats and three popular seats. We brought up the, what we were talking about earlier with the absentee ballot. Now we go through proxies or actual voting for the landowners. We're going to, instead of proxies, we would like to go to absentee ballots. There is a methodology, if you want to go to five popular seats, there has to be a, what was the name of, a referendum signed by, I believe, 10% of the population here in Sunland Lake. And that has to be addressed, done by someone in the public, and it has not happened, and therefore, it's going to remain the way it is.
So stay the way it is.
Stay the way it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to the, any more popular, any more public comment? Moving on to the action agenda. Mr. McLaughlin, would you come forward? John McLaughlin was successful at becoming the new supervisor in the landowner seat, and he is going to be sworn in by our chief consul.
Could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, John McLaughlin, do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the State of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the State, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of supervisor of Sunland Lake, of Sebring Improvement District, on which I am now about to enter. So help me God.
Congrats.
Welcome. Oops.
Yes, would Mr. Gilpin come forward, please? Mike Gilpin?
This is on behalf of a special recognition for Supervisor Mike Gilpin. Mike served on the board for over eight years. He served as president for some of that time as well. His dedication to the community drive to make Sunland Lake a great place to be, to live is unquestionable. We wish him well in his future endeavors and present him with a Sunland Lake coin for excellence in service. This is on behalf of the staff more so, for the amount of work we do with all our supervisors, and for Mike's great years. We greatly appreciate what he has done, working with our team here, and thank you, sir, for all your efforts. Thank you very much. And then secondly, I'd like to recognize President Herrick, because there'll be a transitioning of the gavel today. All our presidents, or they serve, he has served for over five years and just completed his term as president. The role of president for us is mostly ceremony, but there is a great amount of effort that the president has to do, helping down supervisors with engagement with the staff, signing documents, being involved in those negotiations. And all the presidents, especially Mr. Herrick, have done, he has done extremely well, extremely well with us working on that, so we appreciate his expertise, working with the district staff, and it cannot be minimized. The staff greatly appreciates Mr. Herrick's availability when required, his dedication to our district to ensure that we, that all we do is benefits all. I look forward to his expertise continuing as a supervisor on this board and the influence that he continues to pursue. And at the same time, we also want to, on behalf of the staff, present our president, Mr. Herrick, with the same Sunland Lake coin for your contribution.
Next, we'll move into the nomination and selection of the board president and vice president. I open off now for nominations for board president for January 2024 through January 2025 term. Do I have any nominations?
I'll nominate Beverly Phillips. I'll second.
Any other? Call the vote.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Herrick?
Yes. Madam President. There you be.
So I finish this meeting?
Yes.
Oh, goody. This is a surprise. And I would like to open it for nominations for vice president. Can I nominate somebody?
I'll nominate Craig Herrick.
Nominated me.
The law secretary, Matt. We got another nomination?
No.
Let's call the vote. Tell them to call the vote.
Call the vote.
Supervisor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Phillips?
Yes. Okay, and that one's done. Now we need a motion to accept the appeal committee recommendations. Yes.
You do need the appointment and nomination of a board secretary and treasurer for this next vote.
Oh, okay.
So we'll vote for, it really is not appointing the board secretary and appointing the treasurer.
So.
Nominate Melissa Dahl to be your board secretary?
Yes, please.
And then a vote?
Call the vote. Can I do both at the same time or one at a time?
Prefer it be separate, ma'am.
Okay. Call the vote.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor McLaughlin?
Yes.
President Phillips?
Yes. And for the board treasurer, Coral Banks?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
President Phillips?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to discuss a motion to accept the assessment appeal committee recommendations. Public comment?
First, what we had, you had how many cases? Eight cases? Ten cases, yeah. And you're, basically you're not accepting any of the appeals.
Correct.
Right.
I have a question about the, there are ten cases, correct? There's only explanation for four. So what were the other six?
Where is this in the book? Couldn't wait. From this?
Yes.
Under E.
E.
I assume one of them was, your lady, she got up and spoke. Was she not, one of them was?
She wasn't. Two pages, it lists all ten cases in explanation. You're not seeing that?
No, we have, we have two.
Nine and ten.
Two, eight, nine, and ten.
Well, one property owner had three properties, same.
I know, that's not the way we do it.
No, we can print these out, I mean, we, yeah.
I'm sure it was done correctly.
Is that copy you're working? Does that copy work? Make a copy real quick for us so we can move ahead with it.
Can we put this on hold and go forward?
Well, if we get it right now, we want to just peruse it real quick. Well, that's not up to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. I move to approve the assessment appeal committee recommendations attachment E.
Second.
Call the vote.
Eric, you should come up.
Oh, public comment? Call the vote.
Supervisor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Oh, yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Phillips?
Yes.
We will post the minutes now that you've approved them, we'll get the mailers out to these ten officials stating that their request is denied, and then they will, the director of peace.
Put your mic on, John, please. Next is the first quarter budget assessments by the general managers. You want to take this one?
Yes, ma'am. So in your bag, you have two, there's two slides here. This is basically a summary of our first three months as a district. Just reviewed all our monthly documents, sat down with the accounts as well, with our finance team. And this one, the way top of the discussion of where we stand as a district. So this first slide shows you across all our four major departments, our general utility vault, and our reserve accounts. We collected over $6 million in all forms of revenue. We spent off court. So right now, we're going into 2024 into the positive of about $2 million in our operating funds. Our payroll, this is snapshot of time, we've expended about 20% of our payroll. A lot of our payroll is obviously going on right now, not only holidays, but this is a heavy season with our, across our departments, with all the residents being back here, our out-of-town residents, so that's why it's, that'll kind of level back down as the year progresses into the summer. But we're on track, but our payroll, not concerned about that. So our operational accounts, this is where we write all our checks from, we hover in about $5.5 million of active funds in all this. Very solid, very positive, no concerns. I want to break down by the three major entities, because we'll talk golf and restaurants separate. So this is the revenue generated by the entity and the expenditures. The one note in red is, we voted last month to move a sum of money for the utility, Sunland Lake, Columbus Boulevard, some of those repairs. That movement of funds did not physically occur just yet. So that's why I make a note there that, yes, our utility for operational funds is in the red, because we haven't injected any $800,000. It's not saying our utility is underwater. So that, that'll happen, and that will get us into the positive for utility. Our reserves, based on your all vote last month, we've moved some money from our general accounts that we're just not gaining any revenue, any interest. We've moved that into our reserves, and that's that bump up. Still fluid, liquidable, I mean, we still can tap into it if needed, but we're basically gaining interest on it. And in just three months, we made about $50,000 in interest, which we were, we were missing out. So that's one employee, that's a truck, and that's free money. So we will continue to do that, we'll recommend as staff how we can do that, and we still have the ability to pull that out for special projects, like we'll talk this later today. Comments? I'm very comfortable with where our budget stands, very comfortable with how we're generating the revenue. We're, we're getting a lot of past due assessment income recaptured. We are actually closing out a lot of FEMA and state projects that they owe us money on, so that's good, that's injected some good revenue in there. All our budgets, all our departmental budgets are pretty much being very physically restrained by the department heads, and I say that across the board. The concern I have, we'll talk to the Dolphin Restaurant with a couple of those areas there. We do have some higher IT expenses. We do have some higher IT expenses and some computers because we've grown our staff a little bit. We put in more cameras, security cameras, and that was pre-forecasting of our budget. So that kind of wobbled it a little bit. I will look at how we can put some money in there to cover the overages in those, those are very well-needed and appreciated improvements. So that's just to explain that. Bottom line, half of our money, we're only three months into the year, we've already generated half of our budget present. So that's good signs. We are ahead of them, the glide path there. We've executed about 30% of our budget. We should be about 25% in this basic math. So I'm fine with that. The biggest great thing is that we've increased our reserves, not only a combination of moving funds in there to gain interest, but also putting money from our accounts, our operational accounts, by over 30% in just three months. And we will, we will maintain that. We're going to get to a leveling off point, but that amount of money is going to definitely benefit the district in the long term with just in one year almost $1.5 million of interest. And that's just a great thing that we can start making some big decisions. So if you go into the golf restaurant, I want to pull those out separately. Previously, the way we were showing our golf revenue and expenses was more as a forecast model spread out throughout the year, a couple of the membership fees. And I was not a fan of that from the get-go. I think there's been some comments on the board here that we should show like we showed in the district. We get all our assessments in the first quarter of the year and then we zero out. So we sat down, sat down with the team over there with Mike and guys and the finance guys in the room. We re-presented the numbers the way that we should. So right now, our golf restaurant operation, the entity in total, generated a little over $2 million so far this year. We've spent about $1.2 million. Our payroll there is right on track of 25%, about $500,000. That is included in the previous page payroll, so that's not separate. So you really see that the district payroll, a lot of full-timers, is going to be higher where our golf payroll, a lot of part-timers, you know, waiters, waitresses, part-time labor, it's not going to be equal. So we're good on that, in my opinion, right now. Our golf operation definitely generating most of the revenue with our members and our outside play. So as a golf-specific operation, we're definitely in the positive. Our restaurant operation is not lagging too far behind. We now have some focus areas that are working with our guys over there. We can target, and I've made a few comments on there, cost of goods, some operational leases, monitor the payroll. And the operational leases, for clarification, we pay a lot of our alcohol licenses, liquor license, our taxes, obviously, in November, December. So that bump up, that's really from that. It's not that we went into more expensive leases. Under our operational leases line item is all our miscellaneous expenses like the taxes and stuff like that. So that's kind of an odd way to present it, and that's where the majority of the bump up came from. So I'm not really too concerned about that after we started digging into it. But those are three areas that I'll sit down with Mike on a regular basis to see how we can benefit. The deal with cost of goods, we had more sales, that means we sell more food, that means we're going to pay more for food. So it's not really tied to we're spending more, but we had the same bucket of people. We're having to provide more food for those people. And you'll see that in the other numbers there. Bottom line for our golf and restaurant? Yes, we look at monthly. We all should look at monthly. Trust me, we all look at monthly. And that's a snapshot of the time that we can do some, it's like tweets to the plan. The reality is, we do an annual budget. We plan this much money, this much expenditures. So if you look at it, based on those other two products I gave you for the golf, the actual, you see we are on a good glide path that we're in the positive, we're continuing to be in the positive. And now we can really target those areas of concern to keep those under control. So at the end of the year, right now, we're looking at about $200,000, $160,000 in profit. We're shooting for more, and that's profit above all our expenditures, obviously. Last year, we ended with $220,000 in profit. So I think we're in a good part, and we'll continue to monitor that based on all input, further input as well as system. Any questions on the court? You're good. Okay? Make sure we catch you that in a minute, please. I'm good, sir, thank you. That's it, that's all, ma'am. Unless you got a question?
I do not.
Much better way of looking at it.
Yeah, that was nice. That was good. He's here. Okay, where am I? Any public, did I call for public comment? Public comment? Call the vote? But we don't have to vote on this? Okay. Okay. Now we're going to discuss and a motion to approve the new legal counsel for the district with Vaslo Law.
So your package is the actual agreement. We've actually had Garrett and his team onboard since our last meeting, so close to three days of work they're doing for us. I've been very pleased. The access is there, there's immediate responses. We've worked on some large issues that we got answered back very quickly, so I'm very comfortable with, even though I can't walk to his house and knock on the door as they come here, I don't see a problem with that. And their access has been, when needed, they come, so I'm not worried about that at all. So you have in your package the actual contract, the language of the contract, not really a lot of changes on what we presented back last month. This was the snapshot of where we stood across all our submissions. So I just wanted to paint that picture. Bottom line is, they ranked the highest out of our competitors or all the competitors that bid. Their annual cost is there. We anticipated in our budget 175 through 750. And the 750 number is, if we went to court, to court legal action on a lot of these foreclosures that we have two other lawyers doing, that is included in our contract, if you did an hourly billing, it would have been a $750,000 charge in the district. So I'm getting it for $100,000. I think we made out on that.
Very good.
So we're going to put it to work, and they're going to take care of it. And then obviously, if the district can end it at any time, if they decide to extract some of our contract, they got to give a 60-day notice. And it's a full-service, no extra costs, meetings aren't included. So I'm not getting these bills all day long. They have made two copies, here's a $10 bill. That's not part of it. So very comfortable with it. We just need, have to be discussed, we just need to vote for approving the contract.
Any public comment? Call the vote.
No, I move to approve for the legal counsel.
Now, public comment? Any board comment? Doesn't say that. Call the vote.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks? Supervisor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Phillips?
Yes. Okay, any add-on items? Petitions and communications?
We have the one letter from a resident.
Right.
Put it in the record, complimenting our services at our recreational centers, but there was no, no drop on our part, no, it doesn't have a loose submitted. I appreciate the comments, and I've talked to our staff on that and thanked them for the work of this.
Okay, staff reports. Mike?
I'm going to go ahead and start. Good morning, supervisors. Welcome, Mr. McLaughlin. Well, we've put the seed on our greens on the first two, one through four. Started popping a little bit last week. It's been a little slow process due to the weather. It's, you know, we're still fighting it a little bit as far as the algae on those greens. I do have a little bit of seed that we're going to try to dust with and try to top dress with. We started air to gas yesterday morning on turtle, finished it up this morning. We're fertilizing fairways and teas. We finished deer today and going to move to turtle tomorrow. And then we're going to air to gas on deer as well. And then, pretty much, we still got a little bit of rip rap to finish on, whole fourteen. We finished five and added a little bit more on ten. Started trimming up the trees for the mowers for the summer mowing, and we pine strawed all the pine trees on deer run the last couple of weeks as well. And other than that, we continue our foliers. It's all in your report there, what we're doing. We just need a little bit of sunlight. We did get quite a bit of grass off the greens the last couple of days due to the warmth that we had last week as well. So other than that, it's about it with us. I'm sure you have some questions.
Okay, I'll go.
Well...
The word I want to compliment you, the rocks that you're putting around. I mean, a lot of people like them. I think you just go for it more than ever, because it makes the course really look much better.
I am going to put some signs up to ask them to try to stay off of the rocks because I have seen some players walking down on them just to prevent us from liability and everything.
That would be a good thing.
Try to keep them out of those areas. I did get the signs in yesterday, so we'll start posting those as well. Going to try to keep them out of play areas where we don't hit them going through it, but definitely going to try to keep folks out of there. I know somebody will go in there and try to get a golf ball. But thank you.
I know we're going to talk about deer later, so I'm going to stay with turtle. Tell me why we are having trouble with the fairways?
Well...
Because they're really thinning out and...
Again, we've been getting a lot of play, but, I mean, everybody sees what play we're getting out there. You know, we continue to do our command and everything on them. We haven't done a fall lap this fall, but, you know, Bermuda likes sunshine, and we had not a lot of it in December. So we're out now, I mean, number five fairway on deer, when I looked at it yesterday, I mean, it's got thinner, it's got some new leaf coming on it. You know, I'd like to go out and slice them and fertilize them. We've been running our fertigation last week, once we got the heat back on them. We ran the fertigation, we're trying to push them as much as we can. We continue to spray our fairways every two weeks as well with the foliar. But probably the biggest part is that, you know, when we ride and we see common Bermuda and not 419, it has a tendency to check out a little bit quicker. Again, as we verticut and push those in the spring, I mean, we'll try to get us a better stand of 419.
Is it something you can do in the summer months to help prevent this from happening again?
Well, I mean, the ultimate goal is to try to build more mat, but you don't want to get them so matty that you don't have that good lie as well. But naturally, I mean, you know, last winter, we had more sun days, so our fairway stayed a little bit better last winter. But, you know, right now, our goal is, if we can not get any frost on them, is to push them as much as we can.
I mean, the fairways, really, when you look at it, up through, what, end of September? We're in pretty good shape.
It's that, I mean, I'm not going to, it's just that time of year that they're getting beat down, and, I mean, I don't necessarily think overseed's the way to go. I know that, you know, the overseed looks nice in the winter and everything. It does protect the Bermuda, but you always have that transition issue in the spring. And then also, you're feeding your population of nematodes through the winter.
There's a lot of comments coming from the golfers.
I understand.
A lot of concerns.
What is the aeration plan for turtle?
As far as this year, Mr. Herrick, we're going to do it fairways, or we're going to verticut fairways, we're going to aerify them in April.
I'm talking about when we aerated last year, you took plugs.
We're going to do it again, sir.
When?
April 29th, it'll all be completed by the time you get back on it.
And that, just, you're doing it only once?
Well, that's, I mean, I'd love to do it twice. We just need to have fertilizer to follow it up, to do it. I mean, if you pull the plug, you got to juice them back. You know, we're going to slice fairways as soon as we start getting into the warmer temperatures, go back out with our slicer and try to push the fairways and push fertigation again. But, I mean, I have no problem doing it twice. I would like to do it twice, and go ahead.
You're the expert. All I know is, generally speaking, from wherever I've seen it, you aerate at least twice a year. And you aerated, what, two or three times after the hailstorm?
Yes, sir.
To me, it showed significant results.
Wait, you're, we're talking about fairways, right?
Fairways and greens.
Well, greens I did three times last year. I mean, my goal is to do three to four again this year. The whole thing is, is that what I want to try to do this year is try to get a true 5'8" sole and go six inches deep and try to put a bigger prill in them so that the drainage continues. That's, I mean, right now, the last couple of weeks, our base saturation on our greens has been running 30%, which is really saturated. I'm sure when you played them, you seen how wet they are. When you walk on them, you can see your footprints in them that they're that wet. We really watered about three days in December was the max. We started watering towards the end of the year, once we got them dried out. But that's part of the issue. But as far as greens go, I mean, we're still on, we have three scheduled. I sent those cultural practices to everybody. We had to move up a little. Go ahead.
I've just, I've got some concerns about manpower, and I will probably get into that later.
That's, yes, sir.
Turtle greens, for some reason, when I played last, which was Friday, I took ballmarks on the greens. There's no roots.
It's hard to build a root, again.
But they were roots three, four months ago. Now there's no roots. And then we have the issue that we're dealing with deer, which seems like it's going to happen to the turtle.
Well, again, that's why we're aerifying more and trying to put...
But let me ask you a question. Once you have roots, do they not stay?
No.
Oh, you lose your roots?
You lose your, so basically, when your greens get wet, all right? So the root moves up when it gets wet. It doesn't go down. Roots go deeper when they're drier, so they try to find the water. But when they sit there and they won't drain because of lack of sunshine, wind, and drainage, the root basically sits there and rots, and you get crown rot on your greens, which is what started thinning the greens in the first place, is that they weren't draining and we were getting the saturation on them. We've aired a gas and vented almost every other week since November. I mean, we're still doing it this week. But, I mean, until we can get the greens where they perk faster, it's going to be that continuation. My goal this year is to get a six-inch hole in them two to three times, put ceramic in them so we can create these voids where we can breathe better and the water will drain better on them. That's the whole thing. Everybody can sit and go, well, so-and-so's greens down here are better or whatever. They're also newer, and they were also built a long time ago. We continue to fight our greens due to the drainage. It's as simple as that. I mean, Rodney from River Greens was over here a couple of weeks ago.
You know, this is all just technical stuff. I have to be honest with you, because I don't like it.
Yes, sir.
So let me ask you this way. The greens that we have at turtle, this is going to be an ongoing problem?
No, well, I mean, I'm going to get aggressive with them. I mean, you know...
If it is, just say yes.
No, it's not, right? I just have to be able to aerify them and keep changing my soil profiles in order to get them better.
So it's fixable or it's not?
Absolutely, it's fixable. I mean, it's just a matter of how aggressive we are with the aerification. I mean, if I go out there and really wanted to do them my way, I would do a three-quarter hole in them, and then everybody's going to freak out and go, what did you do to the greens? You know, because it's half the equator of the ball.
But, I mean, Jimmy, to what Craig just said, it's your ballgame.
I understand, but I still got to balance it. I mean, I still got to give, you have to have something to play on. Yes, sir, I understand.
Regardless of what somebody says to you about how you feel about it, it's very simple.
Yes, sir.
So what is your plan for aerification? We're going to do it in April and then again in September, is that correct?
No, we will do the summer again. I mean, we did three last year. We actually did four last year.
Good.
So, you know, we're scheduled to do three. The only difference in them this year is I'm going to try to go deeper. So our pro core that we currently have on hand goes three and a half to four inches. I'm, a friend of mine has a company that aerifies. I'm going to let him come and do a six-inch hole in them because that's where we got that layering going down there.
When are you going to do that?
Excuse me?
When?
I'm going to do it April, and I'm going to do the summer one as well.
You're going to go six inches to April in the summer? In June?
Yeah, I want to do April, and I'm going to do June. My goal was to get as much sand down in them and get that black layer broke up.
You're doing six inches, April and June, okay.
And then we'll do September before we open.
In September.
Or before October.
Okay. Will you be able to see a difference in the product between April and June? Will that be enough time?
Absolutely.
So if you weren't satisfied in April, you could go to the bigger hole in June?
Yes.
The bigger hole being the...
Yes, so again, I mean, the June notification has a lot to do with what we decided here in a little bit.
You're talking turtle, right?
Yeah, I'm talking turtle.
Well, yes.
Yeah, well, both, really. Yeah, well, both, really. Because you're gonna, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's why I said it.
Right. Okay, where am I?
Mike.
Mike, thank you.
Good morning, supervisors. Just a quick recap for December. Going through my report. I'm just gonna go off some more general stuff here. So, total rounds in December was up about 3% and that's with our member rounds being down about 5%. That's year-over-year. Total green fee revenue was up 11% year-over-year in December. So, that was a really good month for greens fees despite some weather issues. You can see that we have some savings in labor and probably a little bit of that is from, you know, obviously, if we have some rainy days, which we have total rainouts, we'll try to send some people home and use less labor. So, we were able to do that. Maintenance expenses were in line for the month. Let's see, a couple of events that we had, just to recap those. I did not get those on your sheet for your packet, but the Citrus Golf Trail Ladies Invitational, that brought in over $30,000 worth of revenue. The other event that we just had over the weekend, the J.D. Prescott Memorial Tournament, that brought in over 8K in revenue. We already touched on our major events coming up for golf. Looks like we got one couples event, one nine-hole ladies event, one 18-hole ladies event, and then one regular men's event. On to the restaurant side, again, for December, year-over-year. Food sales up 8%, beverage sales up 12%, overall revenue is up 10%. So, we saw a 10% increase in meals served. So, again, it's a pretty solid month in sales year-over-year in the restaurant. I did, on the cock side of things, the year-over-year, I did fumble a number there. So, this year, it was about $59,000 for a cost of goods sold. Prior year was 58. So, that is an error on, I believe that's on your sheet. Labor was in line. Expenses were up just a little bit with some R&amp;M. So, overall, it's another good month in the restaurant. Major events coming up that's gonna be in the restaurant, we have quite a bit going on here in February. We have the MGA Sweetheart Tournament on the 10th. That will be a whole building event, so that will close down for regular dinner. Tribute nights on the 12th. The LGA luncheon's on the 14th. We have our Valentine's Dinner on the 14th as well. That'll kind of deflect some of our services for that night since it's a Wednesday, so we'll have to, you know, move some people around to accommodate our Valentine's Dinner because normally we do tablecloth, linen, and that sort of stuff. So, be a little bit of different service on that day, but that event usually goes really well. On the 16th, we have that annual Highlands County Realtor Banquet. That is also a full-building event. WGA Member Guest Dinner on the 21st. I expect that to be bigger this year than last year. So, they're gonna need a little bit more room in the restaurant, so we're working through that as we go forward. Live music this month will be Rick Arnold on the 23rd, Bingo on the 26th, and then we have the MGA Election Tournament Lunch on the 29th. Overall, we're looking at about 20 banquets for the month of February. I'm sure we can tell that, you know, the golf courses are extremely busy here at the end of January. Obviously, we had a pretty slow first half of January with some, you know, weather. We had quite a few rainout days, but the second half of January really picked up. Obviously, the golf courses are putting out about 450 rounds a day and sometimes a little bit more. So, obviously, you know, we face our normal challenges of directed traffic and getting everybody everywhere. The restaurant, the last couple of weeks, has been extremely busy, even busier than prior year. So, that creates its challenges as well. So, you know, we have our daily meetings talking about service, you know, where we struggle and that way we can make plans to make improvements, move our resources where we need them to continue to have good service. So, still working through all that stuff, but that's about all I have for now.
I have a question. Membership, member rounds are down 5%. Do we know why?
So, I would assume a lot of that's for weather. That was just December.
What's the rounds are up over the last year total?
Correct, because the public rounds are up. So, in my theory, that's just for the month of December. They're actually up, year-to-date, I think they're up total, but for the month of December, they were down. I think a lot of that's weather-related. I think on the membership side of things, they can play golf any day they want. It's, you know, it's basically limited on that, so if it's not too nice out, they might say, hey, I can just play tomorrow. So, I feel that that's the answer for that.
I have a few questions. Memberships are even for the first quarter. Yet we raised, I'm talking dollars now, but yet we raised it 5%. So, that leads me to believe that memberships are down. The last meeting I asked for a breakdown of the membership so we can look at it and evaluate until the end of December.
Okay.
Anybody got it?
We'll make sure you get, I actually have it right here, so I'll make sure you get it.
I mean, obviously, it should tell us something.
Right. So, we, no, correct. So, we are comparing this year to last year. We are down 13 memberships, which equates to, I mean, that's basically the difference. Yeah, we're down 13 memberships.
I guess the reason I want to see it, I want to know if there's a shift to shorter memberships or where exactly, or the weekend or what's going on? I mean...
Yeah, there's, I believe there's, there is some of that. I think the majority of it is just that we are 13 memberships down compared to last year.
Excuse me, 13 full memberships?
Well, it's across all the categories, so...
I would like to see a breakdown of that, too. Maybe...
I have this, we'll make sure you get it.
Let's do this breakdown so we can talk about this one.
Please.
Yep.
Let's talk a minute about the average per round, which is my favorite subject. Again, it was a commitment from you guys to raise the average rate for outside play. And I'm not seeing it. This year it's 35.61, sorry, this year year-to-date it's $34.34. Again, it's $33.11. For the month of December, you didn't even have to say this last year, you were lower. So, I'm not seeing an increase in play or cost of play as you guys committed to. This is December, we didn't make December from the year. Why should I take this one at any better?
So, obviously, we've had those discussions. You know, Mr. Bossert and I have had those discussions and breaking them down even further to just the total numbers. Obviously, it depends on where the rounds come from to generate that number as the discussions we've had, but, you know, me and Mr. Bossert will continue to...
I mean, it's not like, it's not, the play's not there. The play is there.
Correct.
The cost of what we're charging for the play is not. I mean, it just, my challenge to you guys, Boz, and to you, Mike, is to get your act going and do it. Let's be serious about making this one.
Well, you know, obviously, we can see revenue is definitely up, so...
I mean, $34 or whatever it is, $35.61 for the month of December is ridiculous. The hotel rate's 40, the off-street rate's 55, the resident rate is $40, and we come in and it's spelled 35. Why do we have published rates on anything?
I mean, we've all, we've all looked at the numbers.
No, I just wanted to bring to your attention that it sucks. That's better than restaurant. Just to go on revenue, you're up $57,103 in food and beverage, but yet you're down $14,770 in profits to last year. Should I get excited?
No. I mean, and we're ahead of, we're ahead of plan as well, so obviously, we know our expenses have changed year-over-year.
Your income assessment is up, but your profit to last year was down. I hope your plan is good.
Yeah, no, the plan is good. We're ahead of plan there, so we're planning on, you know, making the plan that we issued last year when we created a budget. That's obviously the goal. You know, expenses, you know, depends on some with expenses. Obviously, we know our labor's definitely increased a bunch. So, those are all the things that we monitor all the time and me and Mr. Bossert, we sit down and we've had these discussions, so we'll continue to go through those. You are correct that it is behind on last year and obviously, it's our job to analyze that, but we are ahead of plan, so that is good.
Like I said, I hope the plan's good. Let me tell you about two incidents that happened this weekend. Unfortunately, they both involved me. For you. On Friday, I think it was, oh, Friday, yeah, after we got done with golf, the restaurant was very crowded, a lot of reservations apparently. Sold out. Yet there was a gentleman who I know and his daughter came in at 5:00. He wanted to have dinner. And they looked at the restaurant, here's all these empty tables. And they were told no. No reservations till 7:30. So, obviously, I got him a table, but the point is, do we know how to run the restaurant? I mean, if somebody's coming in at 6:30 for a reservation and somebody walks in at 5:00, why wouldn't we give them that table? Why would we tell them no, even though the place looks empty, you can't get a reservation until 7:30?
So, I'm, well, I'm aware of that situation and I have, you know, addressed that and we're working through that. But, yeah, so Friday night, we did, we did have 120 covers scheduled on the main floor between basically 4:30 and 6:00. We also had a large party of 70 in the back. So, we were full and obviously, we need to, we need to work through that.
I understand that. Not like the people, don't disregard these empty tables. They're gonna be filled up eventually. You can't have that.
Yeah, you know, and that's the talk that I've had because I'm aware of that situation and that is the talk, the discussion that I have with my team is that we need to, you know, obviously, in those situations, just to your point, that if we have a window to seat that person and fulfill all their service, then we need to do that. So, I am aware and I am on that.
We need to say no as little as possible.
I agree, but we gotta be careful. I mean, we can't overload ourselves at the same time. So, I agree, so we need to work through all of that. We are, I mean, we are extremely busy on plenty of nights of the week. Obviously, our emphasis is on, is it will be on service. We want to make sure that if we seat a table, that we can properly service them in a timely manner and get them good quality food. So, I agree, we don't want to say no all the time. The direction from me to my team is not to say no, it's to say what we can do. So, if we don't have, you know, a spot at 5:30, let's say, well, just like we go to any other restaurant, you know, hey, we're on a 30-minute wait, you know, we can service you in 30 minutes or whatever that timeframe may be. So, that is, that is definitely the goal.
Let's talk Saturday night. Back to back, who knew? We had entertainment up there.
Correct.
We also had two groups of couples on the golf course. The entertainment was here early in the summer, correct? He said she said.
Correct. They've been here before.
They were set up in the back part of the, I don't know what you call it, the banquet area. And everybody had dinner in the restaurant area. Dance floor was set up, it was great. Saturday night, half the place, the banquet room was closed. It was empty, not being used. So, what happened is, the band set up here, all the people are on top of this band, which, by the way, they're good, but they are a little loud when you buy people. And the couples were all sitting at the tables. So, the people who came in for the dinner and the band were told that seats aren't available
Why was the partition closed?
I don't know why the setup was set. Why didn't you take the golfers and put them in the end room?
Yeah, so, again, I'm aware of this situation as well. I think it was, you know, I'll take the heat for that one. It was kind of poor planning on our part. I kind of assumed that I wanted to try to do some entertainment on a Saturday for, you know, to, for the couples groups and try to, you know, extend some of that service and I think that was probably a poor choice and I had that discussion with my team.
I don't think...
I don't necessarily say it's poorly managed.
It was, it was a tough, it was a tough situation for us to handle. I think we can do it, I think we can do it different on a different night and I think it'll work out better.
The night didn't have anything to, you didn't plan it. I mean, with the partition closed, what do you expect? All that noise, you know, and you just had everybody packed in this little space.
No, I, again, I agree with you. That was something, you know, we've had some feedback and, you know, we've had the entertainment in that corner before and there's people that do like it because it's a better viewing option and I agree.
That's fine, but you don't pack everybody in so tightly around them that you couldn't move anyway.
I agree.
Especially when you then partitioned off the back end, it couldn't absorb any noise.
I agree. I agree. We'll definitely, we'll definitely rework that next time, for sure.
I'm sorry it had to be me.
No, that's fine. No, I, hey...
Let me, let me point out one other thing to you, Mike. At 6:30, the place was empty because all the golfers left. Which leads me to another question. What do we do to notify people that we are having entertainment? Because I don't think anybody knew about this, except for very few people.
Yeah, I mean, we do all the same notifications. We do our, we do our weekly member blast. I don't know how many people open those emails, but...
Not many.
We do all our Facebook posts, we do all our regular advertising, we, you know, we have our radio ads.
Do we do any newspaper advertising groups?
We, we, we can, we can. It's expensive, it is tough. I feel Facebook advertising is a lot better bang for our buck.
I gotta tell you, this is a very good group. Most places they play.
Oh, pat.
Yeah.
Stayed in remote.
Again, I take the heat for that one. I, I don't think I got our team to put our best foot forward there, so that one's on me and I'll definitely be having that discussion.
I'm gonna challenge you guys to look at the advertising we do. When we have special groups, not everything. So, when you have unique groups that you know you can fill, fill the place up, go after the people, but just don't go after the golfers.
Agreed.
At one point, we talked about message boards at the three entrances and the circle.
Yeah. We are waiting on the bids to come back. Two of our IP folks have a concept and we will do the install. So, yes, I would hope that probably, well, it will be my February's meeting, I will have a proposal showing where the cost is. And right now, that would come out of our operational reserves and I'll present where from that, based on our destruction for buildings. That's basically a standard structure. But, we will show that, yes, sir. It's back gate, Ortega, it's the first circle, not out front, the first circle, because that gives you time to stop and look. And then it's right in front of the clubhouse. So, those three locations, we're entertaining an idea of going up Columbus so we can hit those areas and we're entertaining closer down to Cortez so you get the back door. But I'll have all those on this for a minute.
Do we ever use Facebook paid advertising?
Yeah, yes, we do. We do use paid advertising and it's, it's a lot more cost-effective than the newspaper, for sure. And you get, you get, you know who's looking at it. Yeah.
The billboard where they has our ad, can you change them to ad?
Yes.
Or is that just a constant?
Yes. The answer is yes. So, we can, you gotta have the artwork in the right format and stuff like that, but for, we can manage that. Yes.
You know, there used to be a deal where you could sit down with the local newspaper and you could, I'll give you so much space, you can use this press. We need to work out a price for it. It's just better than the published press. Maybe that's something we can look at.
Yeah, we've done that in the past. You know, they have specials where you can basically commit to a full year.
If you go to them and say, here's the package I'd like to run with you guys.
Right.
What kind of price can you give me? And then you negotiate on that.
Correct. We do, we have done that. We do that.
We're bringing all messaging that we do. Messaging slash advertising under one umbrella of the district. We've had a problem in the past. We're highlighting a lot of concerns here. Kind of stovepipe. And the emphasis of it, how we do. We are gonna bring it all under one umbrella. So when we hit a button, it's the entirety of the district, not just the golfers, not just, you know, members. It's going to last to everyone. We're gonna use many mediums of advertising. So we're gonna work that as a district project. So you're not gonna be having this one-on-one discussion. You're gonna be hitting up the, 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 the.
Bottom line, when you look at what's happening at golf courses, people who are coming in from the outside, they look at it, they're not gonna come back. When you go into the restaurant and you see crap like we've been doing on Saturday night, they're not gonna come back on Saturday. And it's the same thing on a, like Wednesday, last Wednesday. There was so many golfers in there. It was so loud in there. Anybody who came in for dinner is gonna say, we've gotta use that other room.
We talked numerous times about setting it up in the back there for the golfers when they come in. So we never do it.
Both of these incidents were brought to me yesterday and I were gonna say we're gonna have a one-on-one. We're only hurting ourselves.
That's right. Okay. Anything else?
Move on. General counsel.
General counsel?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You guys are so eager to approve the contract. I had a few, I had a, wasn't talking about. I don't think so.
Yeah, you gotta just talk to me.
Is it on now?
Yes.
Awesome. So with the agreement, Boz briefly touched on it. But rather than do a standard year-over-year agreement, the agreement has language as an ongoing agreement. But at any point, if the supervisors are unhappy with our work, you know, we don't want you to have to wait to the end of the year to make that note us. You know, raise any questions, concerns you have with us immediately. You know, we're here to service you all. You all are our client. You know, we work with staff, obviously. So at any point, you guys want to reach out to me directly. Again, all you guys have my cell phone number. Becky Boz, Nancy Stuprich, we're all available for you. Anytime you have questions, concerns, so just keep that in mind. I don't have any specific updates for you. Just getting, you know, integrated into all the departments. Worked on a couple of issues so far, but we've identified a couple charter changes to come. The only real specific item I have, and I raised it last meeting, there's a new state requirement that this board has to go through the four-hour ethic. Open government course. Florida Legislature thinks you guys need to sit through the whole four-hours spiel. So, you know, I'd recommend working, come up with a workshop date for that meeting. It'll be open to the public, but I try to keep it entertaining. So at least you guys are getting something out of it.
And you're working on a date for that?
I'll begin with you all on that. We have, the options is between now and June, we come up with a separate date. Derek comes in and we give you four-hour workshop.
Okay.
FASD offers at the conference in Orlando in June. They will host a course there for four hours. That if you want to come up for the day, do that, and then come home, that's an option. That's at no charge. This is at no charge as well. So I would, depends on your schedules. I would recommend we pick a window, a four-hour window. Now in May, we do it here. Who does it? We avoid people coming.
Absolutely. Let's pick a date and do it here.
Okay.
And there's a judicial benefit. I mean, all the department head staff, I recommend sit in on the meeting as well. A lot of the public records laws apply to them, obviously. You know, we are government, so there's, you know, there are rules that are applicable to you all that are not applicable to them, but it's worthwhile for them to sit in as well. And then I give a lot of specific pointers and hypotheticals that, you know, you're not gonna get at a generic conference. And my schedule's pretty open the next couple of months.
Okay. All right. So you're gonna pick a date?
Oh, no.
I'll float a date out to you all.
Thank you.
Feedback and then we'll narrow that. You don't want to tie it to a board meeting. So we'll find a separate.
Okay. General manager.
You have your detailed report in the packet. Go over, come up to that. Detail, HR, we have a Q interview this week going on for a couple of positions that are open, maintenance, as well as a records person that helps with the scaffolds and our bonding and whatnot. So they'll be, we'll continue to interview. Road, major operational projects. Road resurfacing, we got a contract with the resurfacing folks. They probably start in the March timeframe. Once we lock in that date, we'll put the word out to all the areas affected. And we'll tell you the timeline when the road is closed. So this is about $450,000, $500,000 of resurfacing that you all grew that will get knocked out this year. Ends up being about two and a half to three miles of road resurfacing. Well needed, and it'll put us on the right glide path in '40. Waste water, we've done some geo-tech analysis out there. We will have another session with a couple of, reminding of the RFP to put out there on the street and to see if we have any takers for the actual contract of the building. Should have that finalized this month, I hope, working with people, looking at that. The painting, obviously, we had a lot of bad weather. That's been kind of delayed. It's back on track now. So they'll finish up clubhouse. They got the front, we'll do the back. And then we'll start moving towards this building and our building over there. And we'll continue that project. Columbus Drive is almost done. So we did all the soil work from the damage from the hurricane, the south side of the road, all the way out to Balboa, we extended it. All that water was still collecting. So we pushed it all the way out to our conference on Balboa, a lot better. So we'll not damage that road. Now we're doing the road, the road resurfacing that, where the road bubble up there. And then if you see, all the sidewalks are reformed. We did all that work. Cement truck, these are either coming later this week or beginning of next week. And we'll get all that poured, all the cement work on Sunlight. The volleyball is in the final phases, the sand's in place. We're gonna clean up the area, get the fencing down, get that operational. We re-pressure wash the basketball deck. It's a lot cleaner. Got rid of all the low-lying areas and stains. That, after we did that, it basically said, I don't want to waste, you know, 15, 20 grand on repainting. It looks good, it's acceptable. And then we'll put it into a budget in future years to do some repainting on that. So right now, we're pressure washing it.
You're gonna leave it to where it is?
Well, right now, we got the four nets. Yes, and we pressure washed. And it's already marked for four nets.
Because I thought we were gonna go...
We want to add another two nets. What I'm getting feedback, first I was getting citizen feedback on, is the painting issue. That kind of died off once we cleaned it. The next discussion I'm having is, we're getting some concerns that putting six, all right, is too much. So I think, once I get the firm cost of how to move the two from the ends to the middle and how we readjust it, I think this is gonna be not cost beneficial.
Basically, what we, I thought we agreed to was like two smaller...
Yes, we did two half courts. Yes.
So in this way, two half courts.
The, once we got the nets up, once we got it operational, we're getting the sense from the citizens that use that, that they like one half court and one full court for full games. And we're getting no, no concerns of how that setup is. Let me get some more analysis on, because the hangup right now means there's actually the cost of move those.
The thought of the half courts, where so that one group would not take the whole facility.
And we're not seeing that. We're seeing two guys play at the end, and then someone playing a game in the middle. And that's, that's acceptable. I'm with you, and that's what I wanted. I'm just saying, the citizens now that we got it operational are getting more comfortable with the four nets out there rather than us throwing 15 grand, putting on two nets up. That's all. But I'll get back to you all. If that's what we want to do, if you all move it, we'll do that. And just, I don't think, I think the cost is not worth it.
Have we had any issues out there?
Not at all. Nothing on safety-wise, securities. We got the cameras out there. It's clean. We're gonna put some benches out there. That's the only ask is put a couple benches for the folks to play. But yes, we wanted to move two things and repaint. Kind of wipe off the repaint, don't want to waste that money. The move two things is really a weight on that final quarter.
What we moved to two things, we'll have to repaint.
You're exactly right. So we kind of drive that. And that's this money that I don't think we need to spend right now. And so the sidewalks, we should see wrapped up. Financially, we all got the budget numbers. That's the moving target, obviously, snapshot of time. So if you want, you know, deeper dive in that, we can get you switched on that. We had a good meeting. We had a meeting. It was good, in my opinion, with our infomart friends of the ability for them to give us quicker data on a more frequent basis, more recurring basis, I should say, rather than one snapshot a month, treasurer's report. We worked out some ways to do that, since they control the books, basically, and we just need them data. So our ability to push data on a weekly basis will give them the ability to hit a button and send us back those treasurer reports more frequently. And that would be helpful for us, as well as informing you all where we stand budget-wise when it comes to our accounts, as well as our expenditures. So we're working towards that, yes. And I got the marching orders from you all. We will make a decision this budget cycle, how we want to move forward. There's one or two positions I need to get in-house. If you want to go the route that you all kind of gave me, the hot slot. But I gotta get those positions. One being is to stop the person, the other being an accountant. And then we'll see how we can maybe extract or reform that order some more. If they give us more access, like we've asked them, read-only access, we can see the live reports. Then the issue of us controlling all that lessens. I just don't have that access right now. So we're working through that with Infomart. And the same with our TruM. Part of the contract, TruM controls the budgeting products, the budgeting data. They give it to us. The reality is, the way the contract's written, we are basically using by default TruM's products. Product you see in front of you is me and Mike sitting down and putting it into our format. So as we continue to work with the TruM accountants, we'll see how some of the other golf financials that you all get can be tweaked to be more looking similar to ours. So it's real numbers, it's not forecasted numbers, that type of stuff. And that should be helpful in painting the golf picture moving forward. So that's a continued work of progress. The, we're doing the elections. We had a good election. We're doing feature, real, public elections coming up. There will be an election year presidential preference will be in March. We'll work with the elections committee at the accounting office. They'll be hosting it here. And as you see, they're scheduled for additional. They write, we just offer a space, they clean up the area, they shut it down. The, what we will be hosting here at no cost to the candidates is a town hall sensing session, call it what you will. For anyone on the ballot in November, this space will be given. We're kind of locking in the date in April. This space will be offered to them. We don't pick a side, we just give them space to jack their residents. Because of the density of our residents, we've been asked that we have a space here so we don't have to go to the sea, we're in Avon Park. So more to follow on that and who can, the candidates. One school board member, one county commissioner has already said they want to come to be the person on the dais to speak. So we'll get more on that and we'll start couple sizing that to the citizens here for that open session. Can't tell you if it's nighttime or a weekend, they're still working all that. You got your 25K and above in there. No need for vote because they've all been previously approved, either in budget or part of the Sunlight. This was the last bill of the Sunlight road project. We just got caught up with all the billing, so they shouldn't be wrapping that up. We've already paid for the concrete and everything, so that was previous money that was expended. And no concerns will be over 25. They were all either planned or accounted for in budget. And to the point that came up in your comment section, Max Environmental are the folks that helped fix our...
Manholes.
Manhole.
Right.
They're aware of it. They're on it. They're fixing that one. That was in their area they were gonna address. I just told them to move it up on the party list. So that'll help take care of that. And they will continue into that area of Sunlight, as well as the banquet area moving forward throughout the year. And we allocated about 100K. 50th anniversary goes well. A lot of details are getting worked right now. Just for reference, the 16th of April is the actual date. And that will be a two-hour cocktail party at the clubhouse. That'll be an invite only for key residents and citizens and county folks, as well as state folks. That'll be invited to that potential small guest speaker. And then that'll move, that'll be just cocktails and snacks. The dinner dance is on the 19th, so it's a Friday night. We're working on that right now. It's a gala that'll start at 5:00, go to 9:00. There'll be a small cocktail hour in the beginning, rolls into a dance with music, live music. Right now, there's about 2:50 is the number we're working on for seats. There'll be, again, a small amount of that, that are guests invited. But the bulk is going to be online, you know, buying a seat. Still working out the numbers. I don't want to throw a number out right now for the cost of that. We're going black tie, we're going high-end, we're going, it's the 50th anniversary. So that's the intent from our side. The following day is a golf tournament. A lot more details will come out as a separate flyer on this. So tied to the 50th will be a whole day of a golf event that we will run. Mike and the team over there will host that. That same day, if you're not golfing, you're not involved in that, there's a community festival right out back here, kind of like we did in December. That will be a, just an open-air market, food trucks, that type of stuff for the other folks. Downstairs houses for the kids, that type of stuff. So that's what's going on. I've gave a directive, given directive to the budgets that are impacted that $5,000 from the current marketing slash promotions budget goes towards the 50th. That pays us for now. What we will know by the end of February is if I didn't come back to the board for a readjustment of maybe 10,000 or 15,000 from reserves to pay for the rest of the year events. But a lot of these events we're doing is we're asking for sponsors. We're asking for either someone to pay for the dinner, that type of stuff. So we're hoping it's a self-generating events that we plan. Music fest in the park, 5K runs, all that type of stuff, golf events. There is a small portion of that. And we're working a lot of the other things there. You see, collecting photos, time capsule. So we're already selling some of the anniversary shirts in the pro shop. We will actually start offering here next door to sell the same things, include back our pool towels and give an opportunity for folks to buy in the 50th anniversary memento. But good citizen feedback, good input, the staff's on this. And we'll continue to work out the details and the marketing.
Black tie event. Where do you get a tux and seabird?
We know the answer. I would point you towards a mall, tux shop, but I don't think you have.
We go.
The mall doesn't have those kind of things. Bells don't handle.
You're fine. Okay, and then the whole message you think, yes, I hear you all. We're, we got the app, we got Facebook, we got social media, we got the month, the Monday postings. It is a challenge. It is a challenge. We do quarterly mailers. We gotta get a better way to engage the folks that are not on the tech media. And we're figuring that out with the direct mailer some way, but we can't just do. I mean, I think our citizens understand, for us as a district to do a mailer every month is about $5,000 to $6,000 to everybody. And most of that is just gonna happen in trash. So we don't want to do that. But if there's a small list of 100, 200 people that want that hard copy, we can do that. That's not a challenge. And we'll offer that as an option. But the other stuff is all gonna be going the digital route. I really think we go the route of the digital signage that greatly affects. Not only last-hand messaging, hey, there's a special tonight. There's a slow night, come on in, that type of stuff. It'll, it'll help us with emergency messaging if we have a bar, a hurricane, that type of stuff. So I think that would be a great benefit, depending on where we place those around the district. But we are going to take that under the umbrella of the district and be able to push out the message so we're not compartmentalized. And we'll take it from there. This month, I have meetings, it's February meetings with the brokers, realtors, and meetings with the builders that we're going to have an invite to bring them here. Have coffee and donuts and chat about the issues we have with them and how we can move forward partnering with them to help energize business in the district and that kind of stuff. There's a lot of issues we have with our builders, as well as our realtor designs, how they message their sales. That I think we can work out some deal or understanding between us all of how we can better get that word out. And it also comes down to the messaging of, unlike a city And it also comes down to the messaging of unlike a city where there's a high mileage rate to live in that city, we have a very comparable assessment slash mileage rate, call it what it is, that if the realtors knew that understanding and not just an HOA fee like they think they pay, I think that message would greatly improve sales quickly. I mean, if you live in Sebring, you're paying three, four, five, six thousand, more than that dollars in taxes as well as the county $4,000. Here, the same house, you're paying the county $4,000, can't help you there. But you're paying us maybe $800, $900. And I think once the realtors really understand that, it's a selling point to sales. And we gotta get that message out, so I'll be meeting with them to explain that better so they understand. Subject to your questions, we can go into this greens discussion or I'm barred here.
I have a couple.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm just curious, the revenue from the water that you said here last year was 972,000, that can't be right.
Oh, in our.
In your water.
Yes.
That can't be right. 972,000 is revenue year-to-date last year? It's almost impossible. And it says the same thing, revenue from wastewater services year-to-date, a million 390,000. I just, seems rather high for three months.
We're generating about 250, 300K a month in both of those. So a million bucks in three months, I think it's not too high. But on that, we say last you talked 250, yeah, just the first few months, that's not.
But this year we're not even close to those numbers.
Well, to the point of that, yes. We had this discussion before we tabled the financials for November. There was a glitch in September, my going in November, it was a little glitch there. That if you look under financials here, you'll see a much higher wastewater revenue and a lower water revenue. There was some coding issues there that some of the coding for the water that comes from wastewater account. If you look at it that together, it's basically what we should be getting is collected. So I'm not worried about that. But there was a coding problem with when the money came in, how it was coded into an account. We're trying to work with Infomart, let that Infomart issue our issue and sort that out.
So the numbers we signed off on before.
They're not wrong, sir, no, no, it's the total exact. It's the totals accurate, it's the buckets they order in, we're cleaning up the language.
I guess, but it's generated quote for unit four. Why is there such a problem in getting that? Because that was listed last month, we just listed this one. Is there a problem in getting that quote?
Oh, to buy a generator.
Well, I.
We have the quote.
Oh, you have the quote?
We gotta find the money because that's not part of money, I believe. So I need to bring back to you where we want to buy that from. Is the capital.
We know how much it's going to cost.
Yeah, it was like 45,000 this year. Yeah, it's not a showstopper, I just, once we got, boy, I need to get it, that's a non-quick drive.
I'm just curious, on the security, it was listed gunfire, for instance, on gunfire?
Yeah, on the north side. So we have, you all aware that Avon Park is a private shooting range north of our Columbus River? That Avon folks use. It shoots into a berm and shoots south, alright? Because of the echo effect, there's no hills there, there's a lot of sounds, we get reports of gunfire. And our security goes out there and validates, there's no one actually shooting there. It's the sound from the range where there's someone north of us in that reserve. But we have shooting, within the district, shooting at signs out in the back 40 of the hole.
Oh, we have that?
We have, it's constant. To that point, we've invested in some cameras that are wifi enabled that we basically trail cam to use for. We've invested in some of those that we hang throughout the district now. That gives us an immediate read if someone's doing something out of the norm, triggers it. And then we're following up on illegal dumping, shooting, that type of stuff with that. Because we don't have a network out there, these are just cameras that, basically a cell phone, that will send a message to our security base. So we do have some shooting, it's never been reported against an individual, it's basically against somebody out there.
Yeah, I've called it in because I hear rapid fire out there and I know it's not somebody nailing a roof. It's actually somebody shooting. And I didn't realize there was a range up there.
The sheriff, if there's anything that they can do out there, if that range is operating properly.
The only thing I was thinking is I would get a drone and if I hear it, fly it out there and then it'll probably get shot out of the sky.
And then there are hunters out there, shot, picked up, burned out. And we do have a lot.
Until they go hunting down, all the way down.
We do have some hunting issues that we're dealing with.
Then two more things, if I may. Street light installation plan and recreation plan review?
Yes.
We've been talking about that for, it's been listed for a couple of months.
Oh, yeah. So on street light, Duke Power has done the assessment. They're providing us the locations of 60 additional lights. We budgeted 55 or 100,000 dollars for it this year. That's the lease plan that we lease them for 10 years, then we own them and we pay the power for them. It's basically Manor Hill area, it's along Columbus North. And then a little bit at Alpeville Beach and out towards the Duke construction, all of Southern Oklahoma. So once I get to find the location, I'll present it to you all that if you guys are comfortable with this, I'll present it to the HOAs. And then Duke Power puts it on their install plan, puts it placed in the ground. And then we start paying the monthly rates for the electric use. The only tweak on that is that the Manor Hill would like a higher end light, not the standard one.
Magnolia.
Magnolia, sorry, Magnolia. Would like a, if you go downtown Sebring, they got this more fancier. They would like something like that, they're willing to pay their part for that and we just pay the regular, we would pay for cement all out here. So that's what we're working through. We've offered that to the other HOAs, my old, they want to do the same. So that's on that one, the other one you said?
The recreation plan.
Yes, yes, we owe you that tied to a workshop, so I guess I need to maybe see if we can add 30 minutes to the workshop that we're going to do the training at, to lay out what we would recommend of the future of all this and to have that discussion.
So you have it, it's just a question.
We have a product I wanted to get before you all for input, yes, sir.
On the complaint tracker, you mentioned that something's going to be addressed with the board.
That was, I've been in discussions with them for a while, we are doing stuff.
And then community services, I just, I'm curious, I may have misunderstood this whole thing. Rocket Club memberships, there's eight individual, four family, but yet you have 310 current memberships. Revenue is only 2,400. I thought we were, I'm having trouble, are we not collecting the money that we should be collecting? Because then we imposed a charge for Rocket Club, for everybody, maybe we're not.
Hundred bucks.
We did, but if you paid in June for the year, it's.
So they're not on the same count?
Yeah, that's tracking what we made from October 1. Our goal is X, whatever number says in every thousand. I saw a goal for 2024, and that's if you bought a membership after October 1st, we count the number. There's existing members that paid, you know, six months ago.
Yeah.
That are, their clock doesn't run out until June of this year, then they'll pay and then you'll see it again. I don't know if there's a way we can, we'll have to figure out if there's a way we can show that.
I mean, year-to-date revenue was 16,000 and I thought we had a plan of like 36,000.
Yes, not everybody's clock stops on 20, you know, 31st of September. Okay, sir. We have our greens discussion. You have any here packet, and I'll let Jimmy take this on, so you have it. We saw sat down, I'm looking at this as an infrastructure project, and that's what it is. Because it's a major effort of the district, one part of the district to do a project at this level. And we laid out a lot of details, we kind of simplified the discussion with a lot of getting out of the technical jargon because I think that kind of, we lose track. So we started with positive and negative, I'll let Jimmy start going. I need to call.
So basically, we talked in the last meeting about how the greens were constructed previously. And that's been since the initiation, when they were constructed, they were pushed up greens and basically dug out of the native soils. So what I'm recommending is to build a USGA speck green. And that encompasses basically taking our greens back out to the original size that they were. If you look around our greens right now, our heads are quite a bit away from our colors and everything. So it allows us a little bit of flexibility to extend our greens back to where they were during the original design. As far as the spec of the green, it's a herringbone design, it's 15-foot center drainage with a four-inch gravel. Underneath it, we would well them out, shell them out 16 inches. If we wanted to tweak some of the severe contours at that time, you can. But basically, once we put the rock in, that's going to be the contour of our greens. And there's a couple of greens that are pretty severe, eight being one of them on deer that we probably should look at just due to the fact that the tiff eagle will be a little faster than what the champion is. But basically, there's some, there's some high slopes in the greens that I think we could soften and make them a lot more pin placement in our greens. So that's the structure of the green. Basically, you come in, you well it out, you do your four inches. We'll build channels with all of our corrugated pipe. So it's basically an envelope encasing the pipe. We'll have, on the back of the greens, it'll have an open drain. And then on the slope down by the approach, I'll have two outfalls that I'll be able to go into that green and blow air through this green constantly. If we get wet, like we've been wet, we could go in there and dry these greens out and get the moisture out of them. But there'll always be a constant air cushion underneath the green. And that's the whole purpose of a USGA speck green is to basically create those air cushions. A lot of people do a modified California green, which is basically a smiley face up from the bottom of the face of the green up to the high points. But they don't do the herringbone all the way across the green. The herringbone to me is, I mean, if I'm going to spend the money and build a green, that's the way I've always built my greens. We built four golf courses, our greens are 1998, they're still good greens. The luxury of doing this the right way is that 15, 20 years down the road, if whoever's here decides to rebuild their greens, it's just a matter of scraping the greens and you still have your drainage and you still have your infrastructure. And that's, I mean, I'm not, like I said, I've never blamed anybody, it's just that we don't have properly well-built greens. We have a lot of fines in our greens and we're going to fight this regardless. We talk about it, will this happen again? It's a living thing, it will not, it's less likely to happen on a speck-built green than it is a push-up green. Push-up greens have just notoriously always been, unless you build them with some super good soil and some really coarse material where they can breathe and transpire and get the air and the water moving through them, it's a constant battle to try to maintain push-up greens. In the old days, they used to crown the greens way up and do false fronts to keep the water off of them, to try to get it to run off of them. And then some architects come in and put saddles in greens and nose whole water. We talked about the sand dams around our greens when we first got here, about shaving those down and stuff. That's stuff that we can eliminate as we're going through it. But, you know, like I said, the biggest thing is to have a sustainable green and to have it breathing. So those are the differences in the top naturally being a USGA, the California. The difference is, is your subgrade, your subgrades all the way at top right now. So you really don't have anything on your push-up green as far as a cushion goes. And so basically, those greens become choked out because they're like a bowl right now. We can go, you have any questions on this slide?
Just to highlight this slide, so this really paints a very good picture to explain our challenge. We as well as all our surrounding friends within 75 miles, we all have these push-up greens. As you see, we have no drainage underneath, that's the red, underneath any of our greens. And that's a challenge, you see the depth of the organic, you see the depth of the root surface. If we take it up to the appropriate level of USGA, it massive difference. So what we're going to do with push-ups is always, we will always be having the discussion band-aids of fixes, of constant aeration, of clearing out, putting more fertilizer, putting more aeration, all that type of stuff. Where if we take it up to the proper root zone layer as well as the proper drainage where we can get underneath on a more frequent and easy accessible basis, then when we're having discussions of long-term maintenance of our courses, of our greens specifically, we're really only talking about that green layer and a little bit into the yellow. Right now, we're challenged that we have to go green, yellow, and into the purple in this example here because of the depth and the lack thereof of concerns of the layers that we're having to address problems. If we have a corrupted layer, we gotta clean it out. Where here, if we have a corruption of whatever type, we're really just going to address top problems in our organic layer, the surface, because like Jimmy said, if there's ever a rehaul, revamp of course, we're not having to redo this thing down. We're into drainage level, we're just addressing the top. So when you have this example here, to the left, you can see a little bit, to the left is just a lot of organics, not a lot of drainage. Drainage you see at the very bottom, that's that little sand area starts in the bottom. Where here, what we have right now is that we have a good amount of sand that's creeping up. This is the same course, it's the year's difference, it's our course. You have the sand creeping up, so our organics are shrinking and the sand in some cases is creeping up in certain areas. That's all for drainage, but the challenge is there's no rock, there's no drain level, there's no piping that gets that water out of it. It just sits, it sits in the organics, it's insane. So you're wanting that drain problem, that drain that you're seeing there. You're wanting that depth of a subgrade, you're wanting the gravel separation, you're wanting the pipes that push it out. So here, your example is in 2024, based on whatever was on back then, there is a decent level of sand for good drainage or some drainage, there's a little bit level of the organics and then there's the top surface. But here in 2022, when we do the same plug, same area, you see the sand kind of dissipates, went away over years and years and years. And the organics are taking more, so your drainage is lost. And because when you lose drainage, be it on it, you have soggy areas, you have root rot, and you have other issues that happen. So we want to get back to the drainage concerns or the levels. This is the levels that we would have to do to get a proper green established. Starting from planning all the way through fumigation and then irrigation system, incorporating our irrigation system. So it's basically, it could be done in-house, we will take that challenge on. I'm sorry, I closed here. We dig it out, and not such a picture, so we dig it out, we reshoot it, we put some proper drainage in, we put the piping in, the gravel in and so on, and then we fumigate it and then we do the sprays to get the greens established. You see there's an establishment date, there's the ability, we would have to shut down for operations for that period of time with all the work that's happening and so on. So it's doable. Here you see the process, you see how far we would have to dig down, scrape out, level out, you see testing that will do. And then you see the drainage that we installed that Jimmy was talking about. Here's that interconnection of piping. So across the greens, right now there's none of this. So across the greens, we're actually laying the pipe work that from a regular maintenance standard, rather than going plugs, rather than going into the ground and digging, once this drainage system's established, he's able to from the perimeter with blowers, with, you know, sucking out water, that type of stuff, from the perimeter, he's able to access our entirety of the greens, either dry water out, get water in, whatever. And it's just the way the proper green should be established, right now we don't have any of that. And then above this would be your level for your subsurface level as well as the sprays and whatnot. So you see the establishment of the gravel, you see the fumigation, they put the dirt back on, we do sprays, the sprays take and then we have the proper green established over a couple of week period with the sprays coming in. So we did, Mr. Eric, President Eric asked for the data comparison. We keep doing band-aids. You're paying about 60 grand a shot to do a band-aid. And that's, you know, temporary fix, we drill, we fill, we do that stuff. And then we're going to have to reengage it because we're only addressing a small little plug per second. And that'll be over a few year period. So to do that, it's in the, you know, the range of 50, 60 grand. To do the full replacement for 18, it's a lot more obviously. But then you're doing what those pictures show, we're digging them out, we're putting gravel, we're putting pipe, we're putting in new sprays. And then we're doing that, if we do it in-house, our calculations is for 18, 500K, that puts in a small buffer. If we outsource a lot of this work, just add 400, payroll and all of that. We don't want to do that. And I say we don't want to do that because I have a very competent golf team as well as I have the ability to send a few of my operators from the roads of maintenance to assist them with heavy equipment operation and that type of stuff. We had that ability to cross-level internally on our own dime to do that rather than just call a company, say do this, and a million dollars later, we'll be paying that. So I'm comfortable with the execution of it under the plan that Jimmy laid out to me, goes for execution. Here's the quandary. 260 gets us nine holes, the nine worst holes we'll call them. And we have that ability to plug that, to take that from our recreation reserve that's funded just for this. And I say just for this, it's for golf, the pool, the community center. It's a pot of money, about 400 grand, that we have the money to dip into that 260 and focus our energy on rec golf, to do nine. And I'm very comfortable doing that timeline-wise, resource-wise, and money-wise. You want to go full bore for 18, do all of deer, a lot higher, we would have to totally exhaust that recreation reserve and then dip into another reserve for 120. Not a fan of that, I'll be honest with you. Not a fan of that. Financially, I'm not a fan of that, I wouldn't recommend that as your staff guide. I'm also concerned of the manning. I'm also concerned of the manning to execute this. And I can only go by the historical context of what we've been dealing with for large projects like this. Uh, the irrigation one, the other major projects, is that it, it is, it will happen that our five hundred thousand dollars will end up being seven, eight hundred thousand for overtime, for outside labor, for the work to do eighteen. Because the time period got shut down and the amount of revenue lost during that time period and the amount of effort that I got to throw at M. And oh, by the way, he's got to take care of eighteen other holes, he's got to air it, he's got to maintain the other holes. I don't need all his guys focused on these eighteen holes for this four months. So I'm concerned about doing the eighteen right now. Do we need to eighteen? Yes. Will I bring you a plan that next budget cycle, we throw our other two sixty, do the other nine a deer? Yes, you will see that, we will have the funding for that. But right now, I'm very comfortable recommending that we can pull the trigger on two sixty, knock out nine holes, we'll beat the timeline, we'll stay on and under budget, we'll execute it in-house. And then we will have nine premier holes that we can use for marketing, they'll be upgraded, they'll give us lifespan of more than one year. Uh, and if there's any effort to fix that over time, it's the small fixes that the operational money will address. We're not having to throw thousands of dollars to redig stuff if we do the, the proper hole at this time. Timeline, I laid it out, if we do nine, we do eighteen. My concern on the bottom is, is right there, it's, it's, it's a lot aggressive. It will require two mobilization charges because the fumigation and the sprays come from out of control, out of our town. These are North Carolina or Georgia, Georgia, Georgia.
Yes, sir.
These are outside agencies that we have to coordinate the company, they got to mobilize, they're going to charge us more. So that's two times I got to bring, just because of the timeline of this. Where here, if we just do nine, I just bring them one time, we're done. And we do all the other work ourselves, the establishment of the greens, you see the aeration of the, uh, the turtle holes plugged in there. So I'm more comfortable with the top one than comfortable with the bottom one, more so a combination of money, but also the manning to execute this within reason and on, on time home budget. But at the end of the day, we would recommend, we, we as a team would recommend nine. With the budget established, to execute, starting in May, shut down nine, focus on it, get them to the right standard. And then in the budget discussion for twenty twenty-five, we will lay out how we want to address the other nine. And then future years, the other nine, the other nine, so we can say we have thirty-six holes of the USGA courses that are pristine, premier, and that will draw revenue by just saying that. You listen to some newscast, radio shows right now, we have some competitors around us saying, we got new greens. They can't say they got new USGA greens, because they don't. They can just say new greens. We can start putting that moniker on there as a marketing tool that draws people that want to play on those type of greens to us.
But not until we do eighteen?
Until we, well.
Yeah.
Yes.
I want to do eighteen.
Yes. But that's our recommendation, Jimmy will have it.
Well, i- i- if we did the nine, uh if, we would definitely get aggressive on the bat nine and deer, so we wouldn't get into what we got into this year. The same thing with turtle was we got to get our bigger holes and get our material in our greens where they drain better and get rid of the organic material as much as we can. Again, every time we aerify, you're only hitting six percent of the greens. Uh, till you really get your drainage and get them breathing right, and I mean, you're, you're going to fight it. The, the whole thing is, is all greens have lifespans. I mean, usually it's twelve to fifteen years max. You know, there's other places that'll do it in six years. It just depends on what their standards are and how, how quick they want it. Um, the main thing is, is you'll have, you'll have longevity. I mean, I hate to say it, but the, the greens will most likely outlive all of us, I mean, if you build them right. And, and that's the whole thing is, is, you know, if they had have been constructed right the first time, this wouldn't have been as absorbative of a fee. And you wouldn't have fought it for as many years as we fought it here. So I mean, it's just a, a matter of whether we want to dig in and do eighteen or whether we want to do nine. I, I definitely feel comfortable uh doing nine this go-around. I know it doesn't give you eighteen USGA greens, um, but again, I don't want.
The thing that bothers me is that we're turned, that we'll be down again next year and down again next year.
Yes, sir.
Instead of getting it done, and we cook, we keep going through this over and over of shutting down nine and redoing and then do, the following year, we break down another nine, which closes the courses down. Now, you know, you're right, we're not as busy during off-season as we are during season, but the fact remains that we're in a period of disarray again.
Yes, sir.
I like to get it, I'd like to get all eighteen done. I'm very concerned about what would happen on turtle, as you mentioned there. I'm afraid, I'm afraid with nine holes, with the focus that are on doing the nine, that we're not going to do the things that we need to do on that turtle.
I, i- it, where, where are you going to get all this manpower to do that?
Well, I, again, I, I'm happy to lay out, we went through this. I mean, the maintenance on the golf courses is still going to happen. We, we have certain people on our crew that can't come do the manual labor that's going to be with the green construction. I mean, the greens are going to be built primarily by me, I promise you that. It's going to be a, a sunup, sundown ordeal. Um, Ramaldo, he's built four golf courses with me. We're still going to have our people that have been with us for the, I mean, you guys have seen them out there, they're going to still do the same things. The aerification of the greens, uh Mike and I, I figured, already figured it out, but I'm going to contract that out, I can contract it out for three thousand dollars for my friend, that's going to let, I can't do it that cheap. If, if I did it in-house and did it myself, I can't do it that cheap.
Say, say that again.
I have a friend who has a turf care take, that takes care of golf courses, they do aerification, they do spraying and all that. My aerification this year, I'm going to give to him for three thousand dollars, I can't do it for that. He's already agreed to me that uh he'll do it for me.
He's an outsider?
Y- yes, sir, he lives in Arcadia, but he's going to aerify them and clean them up for three thousand dollars for us. I, I can't, I can't do that in-house for that. I'll still have to talk, dress and do my amending and everything. But by the time I get ready to do this, turtle run, all the tees will have been aerified already once, all the fairways will have been aerified, verticuted, the pre-emerge is going to all be done, the first aerification is going to be complete.
If we move out the end, move out the end date to do eighteen, how does that impact things?
Uh, we've visited that as well, we would contact Sertoma, the firemen's, and see about rescheduling in uh September or go on the last week of uh August for the last tournament. We've already talked to Mrs. Levitt about moving her tournament.
We had a three-week buffer in August that we.
Pardon?
We had a three-week buffer in August, I mean, shift to the right, if we, if either these, in the nine or eighteen, we could go to the right with very little impact of existing schedule. We see it busting the schedule, then that's our plan, should press those companies earlier and say eighteen, we should.
When is it, when is the fireman's? And when you, as long as you're looking it up, when's the other one?
The finest time.
Fireman's tournament in uh Sertoma.
The, the tenth of August is the fireman's and then twenty-third, or twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth is Sertoma.
And what's the revenue on the fireman's? I know they don't eat here, they don't drink here.
I mean, that's a one-day tournament, probably max ten thousand dollars.
So we're going to.
Am I about Sertoma?
Probably twenty thousand, twenty thousand. They do pay for a practice round on Fridays, but not all of them do it.
So that's thirty thousand total added to them.
And I'm sorry, I.
The tenth is the fireman's of August and the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth is Sertoma.
How did we do it last year? We were closed until October, is that correct?
No, sir.
Uh-uh.
That was the year prior.
Irrigation system?
Yes, sir.
That was not last year?
Last year, we had no interference.
Feels like last year.
It is, yeah.
No, it was, last year we had a, last year the Band-Aid worked.
Yeah, and that was a little bit different with the irrigation, so tha- that process. We opened, we, we actually opened it up and, and we actually, yeah, there was, because the irrigation, it, it wasn't disrupted, the playability of the golf course was still there. So we just stopped, because it was a weekend, so we just played over the weekend and we just pushed everything out to the side. So it, we were able to get by, this would be a lot different with the greens.
I'm going to ask you two questions. Are you going to alter, I mean, somebody asked me if we're going to have level greens or if we're going to keep uh the contours, want to leave it the way?
Uh, we would definitely soften them. Uh, you know, again, I think uh there's some of them that have some severity. Eight, eight is one of those greens that has a.
We don't want to fly courts though, right?
No, sir, I, I, I sure don't want to change this. Now, maybe some of them, like eight, okay, but.
Yeah, no, every, everything's got so.
Undulation is just part of the game.
Yes, sir. And, and we'll get some new undulation when they settle. I mean, it's not going to be severe, but with the first process that I ever do when I go out there is shoot my grade stakes to keep my elevations that you currently have. So that, I mean, those stakes will be there until I get ready to put all the gravel in. The gravel will be tested at a certain level, everything's, everything, one, once I get this upgrade done, then the gravel goes in, it, it's all in layers, it comes up. Uh, but you know, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to change anything.
Is this, is this going to affect the green loops?
No, sir, no, sir, no irrigation will be disturbed, everything will be inside.
What, what impact of giving another four weeks does it have on the finances? I said if we, if we extended the work zone for four more weeks, what did, how does that impact the finances?
We would, I would sit down with Jimmy, we figure out like the areas that would go up possibly is the, the second mobilization as well as the uh day labor that we would need to get for that, that extra work with nine more greens. That would pretty increase a slight cost. Uh, we would work that number, that's the way you're going. We would owe you that number, it's probably in the ten, fifteen percent more, so. Let's, worst case, it's six hundred K, six hundred K would do eighteen. Where I set here to half a million, it'd be six hundred from. I'm just, I'm just, it's right about the daily.
I know.
I watched that irrigation thing, went from a million dollars to one point six million dollars.
Yeah, I understand.
That was going, that, that was going to, that was including turtle loops as well, but regardless.
So that was, that was three K there?
Yes, sir.
Or three hundred K.
I got it, I got it, Ted, speaking. It's really annoying finishing around the golf and hearing about the golf course because I'm on the board.
Mr. Brooks, I, I assure you that in my thirty-five years, these are probably the worst greens I've ever dealt with in my life. And I, and.
Well, I do. I mean, my personal vote would be get their little gun. I don't want to have to do, I don't want to have to hear these conversations for uh next year.
I don't either.
We'll have two different types while we're asked, which on, on the same golf course, which to me doesn't make very much sense. Two different types of conditions on the same golf course, which to me does not make very much sense. And you know, if we have to lose a couple of golf tournaments, plus of it, I really don't care. We'll make another long one if we have a USGA.
You will. I don't think we'll lose the tournament, sir, I think we can move them.
I'm just telling you what my, my vote would be eighteen.
That would be my vote also.
This Texas has got some comment. Oh, okay.
I don't, I just, I. We've talked about this and talked about this, we've dealt with these greens, they're never going to be that. Everybody says, well, the people across the street, across twenty-seven have muck, we do not.
It's, it's, you're right.
We have push-ups and I, I'm going to, I want the USGA greens.
I'll, I'll do whatever you all.
And I want eighteen of them.
I mean, that's.
Is that going to be all right with you, Jimmy? Are you going to be able to manpower that?
Listen, you, you, you'll take a few gray hairs off of my head if I can get the greens built the way I want them to, I promise you that.
Okay, I, I'll hairdresser, I can get rid of.
I promise you.
It's been stressful.
I make a motion that we proceed with doing all eighteen greens, starting May one.
I'll second, are we, are we going to do it at all? I mean, I have questions why we're even doing this.
Oh.
It came out of nowhere and you want me to vote for a half million dollars? With this information, not going to happen here. I suggest we vote yes or no to even doing it before we get to, let's do all eighteen.
Well, basically, that's what we're.
That's what we're doing, we're going to USGA.
Motion to do it, I'm saying we do it. And if we don't, if three of you say no, then it doesn't get done.
I want to be quoted that A, we're going to do it, B, we're only going to do nine, or C, we're going to do eighteen.
My motion was to do all eighteen.
You, according to USGA specs.
If you want me to even have a chance to say yes, you need to have a motion to do nine. Because that's in the budget, this ain't in the budget.
No, that, nine isn't even in the budget.
Well, we have a, we have a budget to draw from.
True, it's true.
This is not in the budget, I can't believe we're going to spend this kind of money without even, why was this not in the budget from last year? If this had been a fifty-year issue, all of a sudden it comes up? Hey, we spent five hundred thousand dollars, I'm not, no.
Because after the fact, after the green, the last budget was finalized, we had the greens deteriorate to the conditions that they are now.
Three months ago, I heard from a board member, I've never seen a golf course in such great shape.
Correct, and I agree with you. And I said that personally. And I've had several peoples tell me that. And I still say that the courses are in the best shape that they have been since I've been here. We have a problem with greens on deer. This is the next step to taking care of that. And taking care of it so that we don't Band-Aid it. Two, two years, this is going to be three years. Two years ago, we lost the greens. We put a Band-Aid on it, we got through last season without any issues. We started this season, we have an issue again on the same greens that we had three years ago. It's time to quit Band-Aiding it and fix it.
We should have discussed this to have it in the budget six, six months ago. We have a professional that we hired to run this place recommending nine for a lot of positive reasons. Uh, and we're just going to not pay attention to the budget, we all agree, and not pay attention to the recommendation of the general manager, and just do it, I just, take your vote, you know how I feel.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Up to the mic.
No. Uh. Dan Dell, resident for eight years, golfer. And uh, I'd just like to say, if you leave the greens the way they are now, I entertained, I played Seabrook Country Club, beautiful condition, beautiful greens, golf camp. I entertained not joining the second half because those greens were so bad. I don't want to do that. How, the thing you have to consider also is you leave the greens the way they are now, how many members are you going to lose? I mean, if you have to think about that, there are avid golfers out there that are not going to want to putt on sand greens, you know? I mean, this is our chance, I think we need to find a way to rein in the money somehow, some way. This is a special circumstance, the budget, you know, the budget is the budget, I know that. But this is going to affect membership, I really do think that.
I agree.
I don't want to go anywhere, I live and I take my golf cart up there. But I played Seabrook Country Club three weeks ago and I thought about not paying my second half dues. I don't know if there's any other people like that, maybe not. Convenience is one thing, condition is another thing. And that, that's all I have to say, I, from a golfer's aspect, stance, you know, I, you can't let the greens like that. I mean, and to play on two different surfaces and wait another year. While the people are mobilized, I think we mobilize them once and get it over with, so that, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Paul Powsky, fifty-five, sixty-eight, Matanza, across the street, Golf Village. I'm, I'm not a golfer, I wasn't going to speak on this subject, I was going to perhaps offer some insight in terms of the entertainment and some other things that I've seen happen. But I do sit with the group forty-eight men, not all of them, but there's forty-eight apartments across the street. Well, it seems to be most of those are golfers, a lot of them are Canadians. The last first Friday, we have, every, every month we get together, every month we get together first Friday, we usually get fifteen, twenty people. All I heard more than any other time that we have ever done this is golf, greens, golf, greens. And we said it, obviously, I'm going to run twelve, and, and I didn't understand the issues because I'm not a golfer, I don't get out there, I don't, uh, taking a stroll. But it's become an issue to the, where I, the first time I've heard them, trying to figure out where else they're going to play. And they're sitting out in the green, they rented or bought there on that location. buy there on that location. Um, so that, that's the one comment. While I'm up here, maybe I can make a statement on the other, that Mike, that might help Mike. Um, my, my wife and I, uh, we, we get out a lot, we look, every Thursday, we go on a site, it's a free site, it's a, it's a Sebring site, it's called, uh, Live Music in Highland County. That site gets updated every Thursday night, Friday morning, and we go through it, because my wife and I get out a lot. She's like the number-two management person at the theater at the college, so she's constantly looking at, uh, talent and whatnot, and taking care of that talent. And we'll go through and decide what we're going to do for the weekend, because we try to get out as much as we can, and, you know, let's just go in and listen to a set, and then leave to another place. What I've sought, what's helped them for the theater, when you go down the list, it shows Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it'll list, uh, ten to fifteen locations between, you know, mainly, uh, Sebring and Placid, and, uh, and we'll make a decision on that. Never do I see Island View, and yet, uh, you know, I go there quite a bit, and in, in fact, from this meeting, I made a note, because I know him personally, that Arnold's going to be there at the twenty-third, I text my wife, boom, we're signed up, okay? She said, let's go to Sebring on, on that Friday night. So there's a lot of word of mouth that takes place as well. There's also free sites for people who are really interested, that site attracts all the musicians. I mean, you should see the comments from those guys, they live on that site in terms of where they're, where they want to go and, and announcing their facts as well. So I encourage to perhaps look into that, at some of those as well, and, uh, it was a good discussion.
Thank you very much.
Now, Friday, I'll go back, and I've taken a lot of the information, I'd love to get some of those charts, I tried to make some, take, take some shots here, to talk to the group, um, informally, um, about the status, because I don't, none of our, none of our board members generally come over here for this, for this meeting. I come because I'm close and I enjoy the, the information. But I'd be happy to try to explain to them how things are going to improve so that we...
Very good. Thank you.
You have a motion and a second.
We have a, um, I'll be all.
Renee Cook Garcia, and I live up on Senecignacio, I'm, um, been a member here two years. Yes, the greens are in terrible shape, but I think if we'll do all eighteen, get it done, you're going to have more outside play coming in tournament-wise. Um, you don't want to lose what we've got. I mean, it was, it was really horrible for Citrus Trail, what they had to play on, what, um, the minor league golf had to play on, so we don't want to lose them. If you have the USDA greens, you can attract more of that standard type of tournament play, and that helps bring in the revenue. I, I don't want to see it go to other courses and we lose it because we've just been Band-Aiding, or, oh, let's just wait another year or two. Well, I don't think we can wait another year or two.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we need to repeat the motion? Okay.
Madam President, I did a motion to approve the expenditure of five hundred thousand dollars for the replacement of eighteen greens on year run from the infrastructure fund to approve the greens to USDA standards. You all agree with that?
Yes.
I need to identify the amount and where it's coming from in a proper motion.
And...
I can read that again.
Read that again.
Read it again.
Motion to approve the expenditure of five hundred thousand dollars for the replacement of eighteen greens on year run from the infrastructure fund to improve the greens to USDA standards.
To improve the greens to USDA, perfect.
Good with that?
I am good with that. Okay.
Okay, the only problem I have with that is the five hundred K.
That's the number we're using right now with a ten percent built-in over.
Oh, the ten percent is built in?
Ten percent.
Ten percent is in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Forward discussion?
That's...
Yeah.
Do I need to read that?
You can just, you can just say I amend my motion.
I amend the motion to do eighteen greens for the five hundred K as from the, well, some, some of the infrastructure fund.
And then a renewed second? Sure. Okay.
Call the vote. Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor McLaughlin?
No, I think it's irresponsible to spend money we haven't budgeted, so I think my vote's enough. I would go with the nine, I would not go with eighteen. We have, we have money in the budget for nine.
No, just a vote.
No.
Supervisor Norton?
No.
Supervisor Harris?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
He voted.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. President Phillips?
So the motion passed?
Yes.
Three to two. Minutes for the golf committee?
They're included in that.
Any discussion?
I, I have a question with the golf committee. Once, once upon a time, they presented to us a devised charter, oh, does anything come of that, or are you doing anything with it, or is it just...
Their, their new president and their new members are reviewed that, continue to review that, since they want it changed. The changes they asked were, were, uh, very administrative. But what's on the table for them is y'all's concern of giving, uh, folks the ability to speak, just showing up at the meeting, that, so that still hasn't changed, uh, but I think this will be the second meeting in February that he will come back to us with, yes, keep that or change it, and then he'll come back to you guys for approval.
Because the other issue was, we want them to release five of the licenses and not be able to take the rest.
That is...
That is...
That is the way it is.
That's the way it is.
That's the way it's written, and that's what the new president understands.
Okay.
I'm worried about that part, I'm worried about the three-minute speech.
Yeah.